Yeah, yeah. And now we have a full house. And welcome, ladies and gentlemen, to the City of Winter Springs Regular City Commission Meeting of Monday, February 24th, 2025. Christian, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Kevin McCann.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Cade Resnick.
Present.
Commissioner Paul Diaz.
Present.
Commissioner Victoria Bruce.
Here.
Commissioner Sarah Baker.
Present.
Commissioner Mark Caruso.
Here.
City Manager Kevin Sweet.
Present.
City Attorney Anthony A. Garganese.
Here. Great. And then if we could all stand for the pledge and the invocation, and Herman Stewart.
Thank you. Let us pray. Gracious God, Heavenly Father, Creator and Redeemer, in Psalm 127, your servant Solomon summarizes the needs of cities like ours. Unless Yahweh builds the house, those who build it labor in vain. Unless Yahweh watches over a city, the watchman stays away in vain. It is in vain that you rise up early and go to rest, late to rest, eating the bread of anxious toil, for he gives to his beloved sleep. Lord God, I pray that you would be pleased to build our city with grace and wisdom and insight. I pray that you would make Winter Springs to be known as a city of peace and of order and of integrity and prosperity. I pray for the watchmen of our city, our elected officials, our civil servants, law enforcement, and emergency personnel, that you would bless their work with fruitfulness, that their steadfastness in watching over our city would not be in vain. I pray for all of our citizens, that they would not be slaves to early rising and late rest only to eat the bread of anxious toil, but rather the blessing of satisfaction and health and refreshing sleep. Tonight, I ask that such work would begin here with our City Commission and the meeting at hand. Make our officials instruments of the goodness you portray for us in this song. I pray for our mayor, for Deputy Mayor Resnick, Commissioners Baker, Bruce, Caruso, Diaz, City Manager Sweet, City Attorney Garganese, City Clerk Yawin and her families as they continue to labor tirelessly for the good of Winter Springs. Bless them with your greatest good. Thank you for your mercy in days past, and turn our hearts to you that we might thank you for your goodness to us in the days that are to come. I pray all of this for your glory and for the good of all people, and I pray in your Son Jesus' name and by your Spirit's power. Amen.
Amen.
United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Let's see. So agenda changes. I assume we'll have a couple of things pulled. Anything in particular that you want to identify for conversation from the consent agenda? No?
Yes, Mayor.
Oh, okay.
The landscape contract.
Okay.
Or I should say bid.
Okay. Item 305?
Yes.
Okay. We'll pull that for discussion. Any other changes at this point? No? Saying none. Okay. So we'll just make sure when we get to consent agenda that we pull item 305 specifically. Okay. We don't have any awards or presentations, then we'll get right to business at hand. Why, I think we have a number of folks that are here today with public input. I'll read this little kind of standard statement that rules are for public input, that anyone who wishes to speak during public input on any agenda item or subject matter will need to fill out a blue public input form. Individuals will limit their comments to three minutes, and representatives of specific identified groups or homeowners' associations shall limit their comments to five minutes unless otherwise determined by the City Commission. And so with that being said, I'm going to go right through, right as I have them here. Leo Weisman is up first. You're on top.
When was the last one handed in? I don't know how you do that one.
Well, that's how it happened. Your last one, so it went right on the top of the list. Welcome. Name and address for the record, please.
Leo Weisman, 113 Brookshire Court. Just wanted to mention that I was surprised to find the consent agenda included the parks master plan. But, so I did want to mention that some of those fields are not lit, as well as a dog park. And even though it's been years mentioned about the dog park being useless during the winter, because it's not open when people are actually home, it seems to never get on anybody's list. The other concern, which I know I probably said so many times, you were going, I know, is the retrofitting of some of the places where all it would take is a sidewalk to make it ADA compliant, remembering that the law was signed by President Bush in 1990 before the parks, most of our parks were made, and they are still, even if they have a handicapped spot, they're often in the farthest place from where they could be useful. I haven't figured that one out. So, and I just took a thirty, I didn't even run the last thirty seconds this time. So, thank you.
Thank you. And then Commissioner Bob Miller. Welcome, sir.
Commissioners, Mayor Robert Miller, 679 Silver Creek Drive, Winter Springs. Most of you know I've been, I did twelve years up there where you are, but that was before, when we were getting a lot of awards for the best city in the country, in the state, and the things seemed to be going real well. I'm hoping now that this, those good times are going to come back. One of the things I'd like to see happen is a lot of the stuff that's gone on in the past two or three years, get put behind us and all that are elected office today work for the greater glory, the betterment of this city to make it the best city, not only in Florida, but maybe the best city in the southeast, best one in the United States. When I was sitting up there, I used to say, we're going to make this the best city in the country. And people would come before us, you know, like developers and people had ideas, and I was always a problem because they used to get angry. I'd say, look, if we're going to have a Walmart here, we're going to have a, whatever it was going to be, it's going to look like the best one in the country. And so we had people that showed up, and I remember one was, was a gas station. I said, make it look like the gas station down in Winter Park. And they looked at me and they said, you've got to be kidding. This is Winter Springs. You know, we don't have to give you the best. And my response was, well, we want the best, and if we don't get it, then we'll just keep making more demands on you. You have to do this if you're going to have a dollar store like the one down here. I mean, they fought us tooth and nail to put those little, those little blinds on the outside. It started off as a box. That's all you deserved here in Winter Springs was a box. If it went down in Winter Park, looked like it was in the middle of Hollywood, you know? It was really the top of the mark. So where are we today? I think we're in desperate need right now of three things, and I'll give each one of you a copy of this. We need a concurrency, traffic concurrency plan. We don't have one. People will say that we do. Don't worry about it. I encourage you, I implore you to look into this, get to the bottom of it, and let's have a concurrency, traffic concurrency plan. You know, we talked to all the cities around us. We say, look, you're doing this to us, and we need some, some satisfaction, some, some help from you. If we don't get it, then we need to, you know, start working that problem here or wherever. We also need a, I think desperately, a, an area flood control plan. I brought this up several times now, and people say, don't worry about it. St. John's Water Management's can take care of it. St. John's takes care of the water quality. They don't care if 18 billion gallons of water come down in our next hurricane from, from Castleberry. We're going, what we're all doing right now is putting our head in the sand. And I've heard a lot of you bring this up, not all of you, but I've heard the, the alternative be, let's deepen all of our ponds. You know, let's, let's absorb the, the extra water that way. That's nice, but it's not really the solution. We need a water, we need a flood control plan where all of the cities north of us, sorry, south of us, agree to start cooperating on where all this water goes. So some, they have to take some of it as it's coming along. The last thing is we need a potable water and wastewater treatment. Problem solved. And there's been so much backbiting on this, and there's so many people responsible for this, it's, it's really almost a tragedy, because we all blame it on other people. Now it's your turn up there. The buck stops here, ladies and gentlemen. All the stuff that happened in the past, you can't do this anymore. You have to say, this is what we're going to do now. I don't want anyone here to say, you know, this previous administration, they screwed up everything. It's like what's going on in our country. Somebody else is responsible for all this problem. It's not us. You're our leaders. It's a small town. We need leadership. I'll give each one of you a copy. Well, I'll hand it out to the clerk and he can, but anyway, thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. All right. That brings us to David Baer. Welcome, sir.
Thank you, Mayor McCain. My name is David Baer. I live at 921 Tuscaloosa Trail, Winter Springs. I am speaking on behalf of the Lake Tuscaloosa Association, as well as the president of Save World Seminole. I'm here speaking on the parks, and I'm very happy that the former commissioner spoke before me, because really the theme of what I want to speak to is Winter Springs exceptionalism. We can fill potholes, and we can focus on that, and then we are an average city. Or we can work and be an exceptional city. I grew up in Winter Springs. I used to live on Citrus Road when it was dirt. I biked through Tuscaloosa to Keith Elementary. The city was exceptional then, and I still think it's, it's exceptional now. But it didn't happen by accident. It happened because you had a lot of people planning for many years for the city to become that way, whether it was because they were telling a retailer that they need to jazz it up a little bit, or because they were investing in parks. And that's the specific issue here is investing in parks. This parks issue became very salient to me and my family. We have three young kids. Two of them play baseball and soccer at Central Winds Park. We sign them up for our local city leagues, thinking that they can practice in the city. All of a sudden in November, we were shocked to learn they're not practicing in the city anymore because they're kicked out. Why are they kicked out? Because when the city built the park, the resources allowed them to light up half of it, and since then, nobody's bothered to finish the park. Shocker. There's been many years. You have this gorgeous gem of a park, one of the biggest in Seminole County, and it's sort of half-finished. So what does that mean for the residents? It means the residents, for almost half the year, if you have kids playing sports, which we're a bedroom community, that's what we cater to, they're driving to Oviedo, they're driving to Winter Park. What does that mean? Well, I know you guys look at the dollar incentive in your budget line item, and there's not a budget line item there for parents driving around. But that is a real cost to your residents, and that's really what you're here to do, is take care of your residents' quality of life. I did the math, and I figured out what that means for your residents. Just on the soccer side of things, if you calculate that out, for the months that the soccer families are driving to Oviedo, discounting the months that the fields would be resting anyway, so there are about five months where we're off of these fields, three months it'd probably be happening anyway because they're resting, so just those two months, if you give $30 an hour for these people's times, that is $384,000 a year of real time for Winter Springs residents. That is calculated only the Winter Springs residents who are in FKK. That is not a line on your budget, but it is a real line for families. As to the actual city's budget, doing this, from my perspective, is an imperative. We all know the reality of what the Winter Springs Town Plaza is and it is not. You see a new restaurant go in, it leaves in six months, nine months, 12 months. Why is that? It's because you don't have enough traffic going by it, because on one side of it, there's a big lake. What the city needs to do is make these commercial opportunities more viable, and the way to do that is to have more people traveling by who are going to stop and get dinner or pick up food, or do any other number of great commercial activities. However, the way the city is functioning right now is you have hundreds of families who otherwise would be buying dinners, buying food. Instead, they're doing that in Oviedo and Winter Park. That is a lost opportunity. It's also a lost opportunity beyond those hundreds of families, every night for at least five months a year. You have both leagues who have told me that if you expand the field opportunity, there will be more games and more tournaments. What does that mean? Not just every night you have hundreds of families driving by those, those commercial establishments. You also have people coming from other cities, other teams, that are going to be there during the week and during the weekend. And on the topic of weekend, they both have said that a change like this will open the possibility of having more tournaments and more bigger, bigger games and events on the, on the weekend. What does that mean? Well, that means beyond just those people coming here for those games, the city for years has looked at having a hotel right there on 417, 434. There's other places they can build that hotel by the Oviedo Mall over in Sanford. Give them a reason to build it here. So if the city plans and looks ahead and looks beyond just this year's budget line items, it can build itself a commercial operation that will generate tax revenue for the city to fund infrastructure and other things going forward. But it takes a little bit of planning and some tough decisions, and that's what we're here to do, is to encourage you guys to not just do the easy thing, but to plan and make investments for the city in our future. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Baer. Thank you for the work you do for the environment. And, you know what, I think I made a mistake. Jocelyn Baer. Hey, welcome.
My name is Jocelyn Baer. I'm at 921 Tuscaloosa Trail, Winter Springs. And I just want to speak from a mom's perspective of why I think having more opportunities for sports in Winter Springs would be a really wonderful thing. So I was the one that signed them up for these sports at Central Winds, wanting, we have three children, we want our kids to play local. We love the community that comes to be a part of sports for our children. You know, we have our kids in sports so that they can have friendships that are local, they can spend, you know, time with their friends near their, near our house rather than being all across town. We've specifically chosen not to do travel sports for that reason right now for our children. You know, they learn teamwork, they learn the work ethic, and we love that they can do that all locally here. And so playing local not only provides a community and healthy kids, and for all kids in the community to come together and have a wonderful place to, to do positive things, rather than all the negative things that can happen when kids aren't busy in a sports or other types of environments. So I was really shocked, like Dave said, when we were all of a sudden driving across town for, once the, once it got darker, I had no idea that was going to happen. I'm like, wait, we have this beautiful park. What, what's going on? Why are we driving 20 minutes that way? And all of that. And some of the real side effects of that for our family, not only is time, but our kids going to bed later and not getting enough sleep, which leads to huge, you know, that's a big thing for children's health and their development and their growth and everything, is to get adequate sleep. And so not being able to, you know, stay local during the months that there's not light is, really makes an impact for our children, for our family, for us, even just the stress of being spread thin when you've got a large family, like, you know, go this way, go that way. We've got all kinds, you know, have, so, so just the dynamics and logistics are really challenging. So thank you for listening to us. We really hope you guys will see what an impact it would make for families in our community and, and for the community as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Christina Harbuck.
Hi. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Christina Harbuck from 111 Tarpon Circle. I am a longtime resident of Winter Springs and have lived here for over 30 years. So I wanted to come speak tonight regarding the speeding along Northern Way where I currently reside. I am here to request speed bumps or tables or stop signs along a particular stretch of road, specifically along when you turn from Winter Springs Boulevard onto Northern Way. Once on, onto Northern Way, there is no stop sign until Shetland Avenue. On this road, there are homes directly off the road which could potentially be hit by a high-speeding distracted driver. These roads are used each day by walkers, runners, bikers, and more importantly, children riding their bikes to school or carrying fishing poles of trotwood. Many of these children don't have helmets on the roadway. In addition, there are also vehicles such as golf carts and electric bikes going at lower speeds with cars going around them. I wanted to speak tonight because I'm extremely concerned about the number of speeding cars I see each day. I wrote the chief of police, and Sarah Baker as well, this past week regarding this issue. I appreciate the chief's quick response as he sent out a police officer the next day for an assessment, and I saw him pull over three cars within just one hour of observations that day. Although speeding has always been an issue in Winter Springs, we now have additional factors, including texting and distracted drivers. It's not a matter of if an accident will happen, but truly a matter of when. I myself am a nurse with a background in trauma, and I've worked in the emergency department and ICU. I know firsthand that just one preventable moment can change a life forever. Winter Springs Boulevard was given speed tables and a changed speed limit in 2023, and I am here tonight to ask that Northern Way on this stretch do the same, as a permanent solution to prevent an unnecessary accident, accident which will inevitably occur. Thank you for allowing me the time to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Deandra Gonzalez? Is that right? Good evening.
Good evening.
And name and address for the record.
My name is Deandra Gonzalez. I'm at 1120 Meadow Lake Way, Winter Springs. I have two older kids, nine and seven years old, that both play with the Winter Springs Patriots, and have been playing for the last four years. And I would like to speak on the lights added to the lower fields, Central Winds Park. Lights added to the lower fields at Central Winds is not just a matter of convenience, it's a necessity for the growth of local sports, community engagement, safety, and the overall functionality of the park. One of the most significant benefits of field lighting is that it allows for extended play hours. Without lights, field use is restricted to daylight hours, which can be a major limitation, especially during the winter months. Many youth sports leagues, travel teams, and recreational groups rely on these fields for practices and games. With limited daylight, teams often struggle to find enough available field time. Lights would allow for evening practices and later games, maximizing the field usage and giving more teams the opportunity to play. And this is particularly important for working families like myself. Many parents work until 5:00 or 6:00 PM, and by the time they can bring their children to the park, there's very little daylight left. I know. I know for myself, I'm relying on other coaches or the parents to help me with my children to bring them to the practices before I can get out and ensuring that all teams have equal access to the fields with the state, with the lighting as well. This could also help prevent overcrowding by spreading out practice times rather than forcing everyone to use the fields in a short timeframe before dark. Central Winds Park is a hub for youth sports, hosting soccer, football, baseball, and other recreational activities. The demand for field space continues to grow as more families enroll their children in sports programs. However, without adequate lighting, the lower fields become unusable after dark, limiting these opportunities. By making this investment now, we can ensure that young athletes, families, and community members have a place to train, play, and connect for all these years to come. Whether it's a little league or a baseball game or an adult recreational league, field lighting would allow more sports, parents, coaches, and kids to thrive while making the park a safer, more efficient, and more enjoyable space for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The clerk has the petition. So currently, right now, we have on our online petition about, it was, I think, one thousand one hundred and sixty-four signatures, and three hundred and eight of them are Winter Springs residents. And we have a paper petition which has ninety signatures, and thirty-five of them are Winter Springs residents.
We came up short one. I'm going to pass mine down. Nope. We'll get it. We'll get it. We'll make copies. Okay. Okay, that's the, the blue forms that were pre-filled out. Is there anyone else that would like to take this opportunity to address the commission? Yeah. 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 Nice to see you.
Kyle Reinick, six-seven-nine Bonnea Wood Court. So I wasn't going to speak about the light thing, but I was here the, the meeting where we're talking about it, and it was turned down. But it'd be nice to have it reconsidered, opened again, at least talked about, you know. My kid does play soccer there, and I know what she's talking about, driving across town. We eat in Winter Park when that happens, so we normally eat here. We support like Chipotle and stuff like that afterwards at the Greek restaurant. Instead, my, my dollars are going to Winter Park. Oviedo, same way. We gotta go Shane Kelly. They got lights all across their park. Red Bug's got lights all across the park. At least, probably considering fixing the upper field lights, because half of them are out, would be probably a thing. But, but it'd be nice to see it reconsidered, opened up for discussion again. I don't know, so that's it.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else that would like to? Mr. Coleman?
Gary Kaufman, six-zero North Devon Avenue. I have some questions regarding the DEP letter that was sent out this week. There's quite a few violations on that regarding the fecal coliform and the TSS. I was curious as to if that is R-one or R-three water? R-one being dispersed on the sports fields, R-three being dispersed into the ribs. That's very concerning if that's been dispersed into the system and been dispersed onto the sports fields and residence yards. So I just question if there's some answers to those questions?
As you know, this is not a back-and-forth time. It's for you to make a statement, address us, and that's how that works, right? Well, we can certainly, we'll be, Matt, Mr. Reese was here, we'll put something out. There's a lot of really scary, really important to note that, that there's a lot of things out on social media. I shouldn't be engaging, but we'll, but we'll put out some accurate information. There's a lot of false, scary stuff. We'll, we'll address it.
Hello. Marguerite Orf, seven-oh-two Cotton Tail Court. I have two things. One, when Central Winds Park was built and the high school was built, they said that there would be a public pool that the high school could use and that the public could use, and it's never happened. Also, Tuscaloosa, not Tuscaloosa, Winter Springs Boulevard and Trotwood Boulevard are raceways. Unfortunately, they're straight roads, and it would be nice if there were speed bumps so that people wouldn't be going forty, forty-five miles an hour on them. And it's a, you know, twenty, twenty-five mile, twenty mile, I think, on Trotwood and twenty-five on Winter Springs. So just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Oh, Mr. Morrissey's walking up. Name and address.
Oh, my name is Norman Gaspar, nine-oh-one Red Oak Court, Winter Springs. Shouldn't speak on behalf of my kid and coach, coaches, everyone here that plays at Winter, Central Winds. We play every day, or we try to play, try to play every day. But I see their kids' faces when they have to leave at five-thirty, six o'clock, and it's still a little early. They want to keep playing, but there is no light. There is just such a minor thing to do. I mean, if we could have at least one or two people, two kids, impacted by practicing more and become a better athlete and in the future become a better person and so on, I think it's just, why isn't it done? That's, that's it.
Okay. Thanks.
William Morrissey, nine-sixty-five Sequoia. So we've got new folks up here, five of you. We all remember the last time this was visited on lights. We know the issues that we have against our city. Three major ones we need to worry about saving our pennies for. This is when you guys are responsible for making sure that we don't waste our pennies that add up to dollars to pay for big issues. But I do have a suggestion. The last time I looked at the consumptive use permit, twenty-five percent of our water was going to water those fields. And we're over the consumptive use permit. So how about we just start charging more to the park for the drinking water that's watering the fields, get the money in, help out the utilities, and put up the lights? I'm done.
Okay, is there anyone else? Of course. Ms. Schaefer?
Gina Schaefer, the Winter Springs Village, and yes, I'm back. I was sorry to see the way the last commission meeting went, and quite a few people were thinking the same thing. People thought it looked like something out of a high school playing government operation. It was very hard to defend this behavior. I am asking that the commissioners be given a three-to-five minute, and if the person would like to yield their time to the other people, then that be, be going forward, being said, and maybe even give you a timer. I am asking that the city also look at passing an ordinance that new development moving forward, that we are not responsible for the alleys, meaning the city responsible. I found out that Hickory Grove, the city of Winter Springs, is responsible for those alleys. And that's only the people driving down the alleys and the trash and recycling. I live in the Winter Springs Village, and our agreement with the city was that we are responsible for them and we have to have reserves to pay them. Those alleys cost, I live on a dead-end alley, and it cost over, to just put a skim coat on it, cost over ten thousand dollars. So I'm asking that you all consider doing something like that moving forward. We do not have a lot of property left in this area. However, moving forward, we need to address those things. And the reason I say this, at the last meeting, we were told that some sidewalks, we were doing priority on what needs to be taken care of. I live in the Winter Springs Village. The Winter Springs Village is only eleven, well, twelve years old. However, we have little things on our sidewalks are for blind people. And if you don't know what I'm talking about, you can come and see them. Come up to the, their little, I don't really even know what they're called, but anyway. Rubble pad. And they crack, okay? And when they're in the sun, they definitely crack, and they become a problem. Now, my people put it on Facebook before, saying you need to look at them and whatever, but nobody contacted the city. I did contact the city once about them. But they need to be checked, and it's something that y'all need to know this. And moving forward, especially with those alleys, if you take on a new development, and that's their townhomes, that is a giant cost. So just, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Schaefer, reasonable point. Anyone else? Sir?
Good evening. My name's Ruben Trevino, seven-thirty-one Sillfish Road, and I'm here to talk about stormwater. This has been what, since last hurricane season, and I haven't seen any activity on the creeks, none whatsoever. We're what, ninety-five days from hurricane season? And the creek's been dry up to this part, at this point, till today. I'm just wondering if we're going to ever go, our ninety-day planned cleanup, this starts ninety days prior to hurricane season, has, is about to have to start to be implemented. And there's a lot for the city crew to clean up. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to take this opportunity? No? Saying none, then we'll end public input. At this point, there will be other opportunities to address the commission. All right, so consent agenda. Well, we will go straight to item three-oh-five and the landscape maintenance services contract. RFP, Commissioner?
Okay. I looked over.
Yeah, I think we might give a second. If anybody did want to leave, we'll let you go here. But you, trust me, you've been heard, and then when we're talking about lights, for example, we know that we've, you've met with several of us independently, and we've had some really good valuable talks.
I thought there was no response after.
Yeah, I was just saying, thank you. I was giving them a moment to leave, sir. And, and that way the commissioner's not interrupted as people get up to go. Okay. Sorry about that. Thanks for the patience.
Okay, so I've gone over the entire bid, and I've, I've even had a meeting this morning with staff, you know, bringing up my concerns. And one of the, a couple of things stand out that really bother me about this. First of all, I also reached out to surrounding cities and the county to get their opinions and see where they are with landscaping companies, how many they use, and also what their thought is on having one single company handle, handle the entire city. And every single one of them that I spoke with said it's not smart to have one company handle the entire city. I kind of knew the answer to that, but I wanted to hear their opinion on it. And the biggest thing they all told me was, you know, you have to have a backup plan. And if you have one company, you need a backup plan. So, you know, I've heard that, well, if something happens, you know, we can get somebody in right away. You know, it does happen. Companies have gone out of business, emergencies happen, whatever. So that's an issue that I have. Another issue I have with this, if, if anyone else has it in front of them, which I don't know if you do, I'm concerned about area number four in this bid that shows ponds and roadways. And the one company that, I guess, has the bid or won the bid has a significantly lower number than the other companies in question. And that's a red flag to me, you know, being, working in the, in the industry, and that doesn't sit well with me. So that, and the biggest thing that I want to say to my fellow commissioners is this. I've said this in the past, and I'm going to say it again. I'm tired of outsourcing. I'm tired of other companies handling everything that we do here that we used to handle ourselves in the past. One of those things was landscaping. We had landscaping crews in the past. If I'm wrong, please, someone correct me.
Many years ago, yeah.
Right.
Many years.
So with that being said, my fellow commissioners, do we want to keep outsourcing a big contract like this? Or do we want to bring it back in-house and provide better service to the residents and have a significantly lower cost to the residents as well? And I understand that there'll be some more oversight, some more supervision, more staff. And I understand Commissioner Diaz doesn't like to have, you know, more government. I get it. I don't as well. But this is one of those instances right here that I believe we can benefit from significantly. I know what all the equipment costs. I know what the trucks cost. We're talking three crews, you know, and if that's not enough, maybe four. We could always, you know, play it by ear and see how it goes. I'm in favor of that, and I, I want everyone to understand where I stand with this as far as the savings. You know, we're talking a huge contract here. And long-term, I look at the long-term, you know. Is it public yet with the, what this bid is?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right there.
So we're talking the seven-hundred thousand dollar, close to a seven-hundred thousand dollar contract, okay? I ran fast numbers, and my numbers are not one-hundred percent, but they're pretty close. You know, initial cost, you know, we're, we're talking anywhere from four hundred to, say, six hundred conservatively, you know, as an initial expense to start this ourselves, back starting it. Because I'm assuming we don't have the equipment. So you did a little long-term. That's seven-hundred thousand dollars a year, and it, it'll probably go up through the years. And you can see the math right there.
Please, 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 we don't do that.
We'll have the employees, you know, they'll be here working in the city. The, the, the first year would be taking care of the equipment and the employees. I understand that, and I want everybody to understand that as well. But the second year, we're just employees. You know, if you put four men on a truck or women on a truck, that's three crews, do the math. Plus benefits. We, we give benefits. This is a numbers. This is about, this is about numbers. And Commissioner Diaz, I encourage you to look at this as well. You know, you're good with numbers, and I think we could be on the same page, everyone else. I, I definitely hope you keep it in the back of your mind about this as well. That's all I have to say.
Don't see any other buttons lit. I might just simply ask the city, the city manager, do we know how many employees this contractor will be employing?
Yeah, my understanding is they'll be running three crews. The three crews will be dedicated to the city, full-time, dedicated crews, maintaining all of the right-of-ways and the assessment districts and all that. So it's essentially what's being on now, this consolidated contract. I think one of the things to, to note is that it does reduce our current cost by a hundred and thirty-three thousand, just under a hundred and thirty-four thousand in costs today by combining it with a, improving the city's purchasing power through having it as a, as one vendor. I, you know, I, just reviewing this, this, obviously, this was developed and put out before my time, joining as city manager. This is, it's a big undertaking to bring this in-house, to say the least, not to which of, is the capital investment that we, that we don't have, you know, which Commissioner Crusoe touched on. But, you know, I think without really doing a full dive analysis, one thing to keep in mind, this is before you this evening, we currently do not have a contract. We are on, you know, thirty-day extensions and continuing. So I don't know what level has in the past been requested to, to really do an, an analysis and evaluation of what those costs were. I do not believe it will be a I do not believe it will be a significant savings. There may be some savings in the short term, but long-term, when you have employee benefits and long-term liabilities, some things don't make sense to outsource, other things do. This is probably, at least given the current state, where the city's at with, without the capital, equipment and staffing, these positions are very, very difficult to keep staffed. When you're talking about landscape crews, you know, we probably will never be fully staffed where the numbers are needed, and we'll constantly be hiring. It's a, it's a challenging thing. One thing I would say, there's not a lot of, we don't, it's not that big. We don't have a significant amount. It's a large, you know, large, dedicated enough for three crews. But when you think about the amount there, it's not astronomical where one company with three dedicated crews can't maintain and keep it. But again, I just want to highlight for those that are listening and for the commissions, I think we thought outside the box here by looking at how do we try to, it's not just a cost thing, it's a management issue. When you're talking about managing three different vendors, that's three different invoices, that's three different administration, administrative duties, that's quality control, three different project managers. And really, by consolidating it as one, one project with one vendor, we've reduced the costs, as I said, by 135,000 over what we're paying today, as well as just the management of it in general. It's much more streamlined.
So, follow-up question, if you mind if I do a follow-up question? So, thank you for saving us $135,000. I appreciate that. But the item on the consent just before this is a new John Deere precision-cut fairway mower for $86,000. So, clearly, we're still doing some.
No. This contract does not, does not include central winds. So, that mower is one of two mowers that's dedicated to the parks department, it's a different, different use, different utilization. We have two mowers that are rotated to save on hours and usage and the like. So, that mower that was approved is for, will be approved, is essentially replacing one that's no longer going to be covered as far as the service warranty and just, it's out of life, it's basically out of lifespan.
I think I was simply making a point. So, we are cutting some lawn, we are still supporting some equipment. It's just not for all the streets and different, that was my point.
That mower is, is central winds dedicated.
Yep. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. And Commissioner Caruso, thanks for bringing this up. In that, city manager, in the bid contract, as the ponds are stated, what is the expectation we have in reference to the ponds in this contract? Do we know?
It'd probably be better if we, maybe have, either through Leonard or one of the staff speak to the specific intricacies of what's expected. Mr. Mayor, if that's all right?
Yeah, that's fine. Good evening, Mr. Maddox, name.
Good evening. Mayor and Commissioner, Kevin Maddox, landscaping and arbor manager of the city of Winter Springs. Could you repeat your question, Commissioner Resnick? I'm sorry.
Area four is the ponds, right?
Correct.
What is our expectation of this piece?
Expectation, um.
Well, so it says ponds.
Correct.
Each company bid for the ponds. What do we expect the company to do in reference to our ponds?
To keep them mowed and keep the natural areas pushed back.
So, they're just mowing, just cutting?
Correct.
So, the one company comes in at $4,000, the other two companies come in at 16 and $20,000?
Correct, a month.
So, how is it that there's three companies and two are close, but one's such a discrepancy?
That is something that we, it's an area that that company that came in the lower end felt that they could save with their type of equipment that they have to do that type of mowing. So, they would cut down on man-hours, save on labor rate by using different types of equipment.
In that conversation, specific to that, we have, do we have an expectation that when they're cutting, that they're cutting the grass around the ponds away from the water, or is it going to go into the water?
Away from the water.
And who's monitoring that?
Myself, as well as their, their staff, and as well as myself, and stormwater.
Perfect. What's they held accountable on that? Because at $4,000, I can't assume that they're going to be bringing in somebody every week to walk behind these people. So, how do?
They do have a dedicated manager, account manager, that will monitor every aspect of the crews onsite every week, whenever, whenever the work is performed.
I have one more question for you in reference to the bids.
Yes, sir.
When you look at bids, is it common for one company to have every line item cheaper than all their competition in this area? Specifically?
I wouldn't say it's uncommon. I'm not going to say it's, it's. It really depends on the, on the bid, to be honest with the nature of the bid. But I wouldn't say it's uncommon to have cheaper, cheaper numbers.
And we've worked with this company before, right?
Correct. They actually, they have a couple of contracts here with us now.
Okay. So, we can hold them accountable because, you know, that's part of the reason that we have concerns in the past, right?
Correct.
Anyone else?
So, I don't know if you can answer this question, but something you just said, I need a little clarification on. You said that they have different type of equipment that can help them get done faster or more efficient?
Correct.
Do you know what kind of equipment that is?
Trifold mowers.
Aside from zero turns and which is?
No, they are zero turn. They're zero-turn mowers, but as you, as you know, being in the industry, they, you know, the largest decks they typically make for a zero-turn to 72-inch, so a six-foot swath, these are 100, 124-inch, 144-inch zero-turn mowers that the sides fold up that, that they will be employing.
So, they're going to bring those big machines?
They're, they're no larger than, so when they fold up.
I know what, yeah.
They are, they're the same size as a 72-inch deck mower. The only added weight is the, the added deck, and the motor's a little larger.
Does it state anywhere in the, in their bid that they use that machine?
It should state in their, on their qualify, or in their packet that that was submitted with their, with their proposal, that they utilize that type of equipment for larger area mowing, mowing, sorry.
So, I just asked, so we've used this company before?
Yes, we are currently employing them.
Overall, you're happy, satisfied with?
Absolutely.
You're happy with the, the response that you've had with their management team?
Yes, sir.
The others that responded, would you say this is the largest organization of those that responded to the bid?
No. No. Largest being Rotolo.
Okay, thanks.
But they're really large. As a company.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for the?
Well, not a question, just something else I want to put out there.
Okay. So, the gentlemen are done, they can sit down?
Yeah, yeah, I believe so.
Thank you so much.
So, we just trimmed our crepe myrtles, correct, city manager?
Correct.
Do we have a cost, what that was?
I don't have that cost.
Well, it was under 50,000, correct?
Yes.
So, another point I want to bring up is that, one, we can either, in the future, and we discussed this, this morning, and in the future, after the next contract is up, maybe get that incorporated into the contract or save that money, like I had spoken earlier. If we had in-house, we can have in-house save us that money. So, that's every year approximately 40, close to $50,000 a year. And maybe we can get the palm trees on Tuscaloosa Road also trimmed and any other palm trees in those areas. Because I don't believe they get trimmed as much as they should. Just, just a point.
There's a per-palm tree rate if we select it, correct, Kevin?
Yeah.
Yes. There's a per-palm tree rate. It's not built in, it's an option. We have an option for the per-palm tree rate.
Chris, yes, everything is a, is a per-palm tree, or per-tree, everything above 13-foot, including canopy trees, crepe myrtles, and palm trees.
But that's a saving.
It's a, it's a per-tree.
It's an external, it's an additional add-on.
Correct.
Further discussion on that specific item, three oh five?
I just wanted to give a recap. So, currently, we have three different providers providing services to the city. One is Tuscaloosa, one is the City Hall and Police, and the rest is the remaining of the city. So, this would consolidate it to be one company. I have personally seen Nature Care. They, they have taken over Tuscaloosa. And I was very pleasantly surprised with their service. I mean, on their hands and knees, weeding, planting, I was just, it was, it was, it was very I/Oening the next, the next day when they were retained. So, I really like Nature's Care. I like what you're thinking about, in-house. But at the same time, I think combining these at its well to leverage our buying power is good. And I've been very, very, very pleasantly pleased with Nature's Care. So, I just wanted to make that noted.
Thank you, Commissioner. If there's no further discussion on that item or other items on the consent agenda, I'd ask for a motion.
I would like to make a comment on one other item.
Please.
So, to all the people that were here and all the people that are listening, in the agenda item, there is the Central Winds Master Plan Report. I know I read it, I assume everybody else up here read it for the public out there. This is just a report that now comes to us from an outsourced company, and we get to go to work on this. So, our work starts now that this report is in here. This is not us saying that we're going to do everything in here. It is a starting piece.
Fair. Yeah, very appropriate. Thanks. Yeah, all right. If there's no further, then I would ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion's made by the Deputy Mayor. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Baker. Christian?
Commissioner Bruce?
Aye.
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Resnick?
Aye.
Commissioner Caruso?
No.
Commissioner Diaz?
No.
And motion passes. All right. That brings us to public hearings agenda and the first reading of ordinance 2025-07, procedures for naming buildings, parks, and streets. Anthony?
Read by title only, please? Motion to read by title only?
Motion, read by title only, is made by the Deputy Mayor. Is there a second? No. And seconded by Commissioner Caruso. All in favor?
Aye.
Read by title only? I'm seeing heads all shaking, none opposed?
Anthony?
Okay. Ordinance 2025-07, an ordinance of the City Commission of the city of Winter Springs, Florida, adding a new article, nine procedures for naming buildings, parks, and streets to Chapter Two Administration of the City Winter Springs Code of Ordinances, providing for the repeal of prior inconsistent ordinances and resolutions incorporated into the code, severability, and an effective date. This is first reading of this ordinance, also a public hearing item. City Commission requested that an ordinance be proposed to the commission just establishing some basic guidelines regarding the naming of buildings, parks, and streets, and also the procedure by which that would occur, so it would be memorialized in writing. So, pretty basic, basic ordinance, what you would typically find in, you know, this kind of ordinance regarding the types of naming limitations and restrictions and, and the process. Process would make it very clear that the naming actually has to be approved by the city commission. So, I'd be happy to answer any specific questions you may have regarding this ordinance.
All right. Commissioners, discussion? No discussion. Okay. Just kind of cleaning it up a little bit. Okay. Then, if there is no discussion, it's a public hearing item. If anyone that's in the public would like to comment, this is a policy setting up how and when we can name buildings and parks and streets after individuals. Just trying to set something for some consistency. Anyone that would like to speak on this specific item, not other items? Ms. Schaefer?
Gina Schaefer, the Winter Springs Village. I've asked you all before, and I'm asking again that Hammock Park is kind of a little, sorry. I mean, that was easy. That you all have a contest and let people try to name that park in a going, if you go by your guidelines that you all wrote up, historical, okay? We're going to be coming up on our birthday, and historical things that have happened, people in here who started the city, whatever, but have something like that. But I'm just asking for that. Thank you.
Thanks. And I'm, I'm the mayor, I know, I should know this.
She means Wetlands Park.
Which one?
She means Wetlands Park, not Hammock Park.
Oh, oh, I got you, I got you, I got you. Okay, thanks. Okay. Mr. Morrissey. Glad to see you're not in crutches anymore.
Thank you.
I bet you are too.
You have no clue.
Yeah.
William Morrissey, 965 Sequoia. Does this mean we can change 434 to Main Street? Because every small town needs a Main Street, so we're not a pass-through.
It's a D E P conversation.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Saying none, we'll end public input on this particular item, and I'd ask for a motion.
I'll make that motion to approve item 400.
A motion to approve item 400 by the Deputy Mayor, Resnick. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Caruso and Christian.
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Resnick?
Aye.
Commissioner Caruso?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Bruce?
Aye.
And motion passes unanimously. Okay. Gets us to the regular agenda, an intent to award an RFP, a request for a proposal, 1224-02, to replace an inlet valve at the West Water Reclamation Facility on Cathcart, to Cathcart Construction Company. Let's see, I know that most of you have met with the city manager and been briefed. Is there a conversation, or do you have further questions for the city manager? I do understand that, well, to start the conversation, this valve is roughly $600,000. This is storm-related, so we anticipate, although it may not be fully guaranteed, we anticipate FEMA to reimburse us 75% of the cost of this valve. Is that a fair assessment?
Yes, that's accurate. It was damaged during Hurricane Ian. And the intent would be to submit for FEMA reimbursement as a, as part of the request.
Thanks. Discussion? If there is no discussion, then I'd ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve item 500 as presented.
And motion's made by Deputy Mayor Resnick. A second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Baker. Christian?
Deputy Mayor Resnick?
Aye.
Commissioner Caruso?
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz?
Aye.
Commissioner Bruce?
Aye.
Commissioner Baker?
Aye.
And motion passes unanimously. All right. Then that gets us to item 501, matters related to boards and committees.
I didn't include any applications. The only vacancies are for boards that we are either previously discussed merging or reworking. The only question that I really wanted to talk about is that there are several boards that we still haven't addressed, previously voted to take them one at a time. I just wanted to make sure the commission was still, that was still the will of the commission to bring back those boards that we've yet to review individually in a meeting.
Or I might have a suggestion, and we've batted a lot of different things around. Maybe do we go back and finish talking about each of us being a liaison to one or more boards? And then, maybe that's when each of the commissioners can come back. Like, I've been working with, with veterans advocates and trying to kind of streamline their mission statement and kind of what we're going to be doing moving forward. Talk to the city manager and different employees about how that might work as well. Should we each kind of come back with our own idea, maybe be that liaison, and then come back with ideas? As opposed to just kind of throwing one at the commission each meeting and kind of going around and around again? Does that make sense, what I'm trying to say? Should we each kind of go off on our own and find out some more information about, and then let each commissioner respond about each group? I'm open for suggestions, I guess. Not hearing anything. So, are we going to continue then to bring each one in one by one and just have a general discussion about what they do? Are we going to let it rest? Are we going to let it rest? Yeah. Commissioner Baker.
I think, I don't know if it's necessary to bring them all in one by one. I think we've established that we would like to keep most of these boards, or somehow change them, and I think we should put it out there that we would like to just reevaluate each of the boards and make their duties more understood by them and by the Commission and by the staff, and appoint someone or somehow to relay that information back to the Commission. I think, really, they just need guidance, training, and a little bit more of a description of what their committee actually is. From what I've seen, I've only seen like a small paragraph in each of the board and committee handbooks, so I think that that's the biggest thing that all of them are dealing with, is a lack of direction. So I don't know if it's necessary to come in and have these meetings where we talk about them, and are we going to keep them, or are we not going to keep them, when really the overall consensus is they just need direction.
Okay. So then are we going to ask the city staff to help to lead that charge and kind of reevaluate each one and see how each one should be? Or, I guess I'm still stuck with is exactly are we asking staff to do? What are we specifically asking? How are we moving forward? Any other suggestions? It makes perfect sense what you're saying. I think we just need to reestablish. Look, certain ones, you know, the code enforcement, I think they understand their role. You know, the Board of Trustees understands their role. They work really hard. A lot of these understand their roles, but those that need some help and better guidance, I think we need to be there for them.
Absent a motion, and second, I'm just going to keep bringing back the boards, because that is the previous direction of the Commission, so whatever you all decide, but I'm just letting you know, absent you all making a motion or anything, so next meeting I'll bring back, you know, whatever one's next on the list, planning and zoning.
Is there someone that would like to make a motion to put a pause on bringing in each board one at a time? Would you like to put a pause on that? Or is there a specific board that you want to discuss?
Put a pause on it until we get a specific board that we want to talk about.
Okay. So is that a motion?
I'll make a motion to pause on bringing boards until we get a specific one we want to talk about.
Okay. Motion made by Deputy Mayor Resnick. A second?
I will second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Bruce. Christian.
Commissioner Caruso.
Aye.
Commissioner Diaz.
Aye.
Commissioner Bruce.
Aye.
Commissioner Baker.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Resnick.
Aye.
Wonderful. Clear with that one there? Thank you, Mr. Gowan. Okay.
May I?
Please.
Christian, it's my understanding that you've contacted the Parks and Rec Committee to let them know that we may be merging?
Correct.
And they have all said that I would like to stay on. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes. I think one person didn't explicitly say that. They were asking about, you know, what the specific duties were, but they did, they were interested.
So what's the next step? How do we merge the two?
So the next step is going to be bringing ordinance, basically. Since those boards are both created by ordinance, and I mean, we'll work with Anthony's office to do that, whether, you know, we just have to amend one of them, whatever it is. So an ordinance will need to be brought to the Commission, so should look out for that in the near future.
Great, thank you.
Okay. So then, moving on. I have no appointments, so we'll go right on to new business. And who would like to lead the conversation?
I just have one, which came up tonight.
Okay.
So I actually like the idea from Commissioner Caruso in talking about possibly bringing it in-house, but I know that sometimes timing and planning for that is an important one. So maybe we could take some time to really assess what that would look like, do a complete analysis of that, rather than just us talking without knowledge and kind of have staff bring back a presentation for us of what kind of the compare, contrast. Commissioner Caruso?
I agree.
Do you like that idea?
Yes, I love it.
So?
I use the same analogy with the landscaping as I would with wastewater. So I'm on board with it, 100%.
Okay.
Okay.
Give them a few months to kind of do a study or five, you know?
Yeah, this is.
It's not to next week. This is to take time to do the proper study that we need.
So we just approved a one-year contract, so?
No, three.
Three-year contract, so yeah, thank you. Get me. So it's something that we can start digging into?
Yeah.
Okay.
Just to confirm, so we have three crews working, I'm assuming there's four, three crews in each. There'd be 12 more people we'd have to hire each year? Is that what you're thinking?
Well, the way it was told to me, I believe there's two, possibly three crews that do the west side, and one to two crews on the east side, and then one gentleman by himself that does City Hall and Police Department, and I believe a couple of other properties. So I think it's, I think three crews starting would be, just to see how it would be. I think when you have your own employees in-house, you get better quality. That's just my opinion. I don't like, I don't want to badmouth any other companies, but I see how the bigger ones operate, so that's why I, you know, presented it the way I did.
Right. But even, I mean, just thinking out loud, I mean, even if you had 12 new employees making $50,000 a year, I'm not even counting benefits, we're already at $600,000, and that doesn't even include the million-plus equipment we're going to need.
No, not a million.
Okay.
But think long-term.
Right. But this mowing, this mower we just approved?
Well, that's separate from the landscape.
It's a six-year mower, and it's $80,000.
Yeah, that's the separate.
Ninety.
Can't include that with the landscape.
Okay.
That's total, separate parks, lawnmower. I guess it's for the special grass, correct?
Yeah, centrally.
Yes. You can't use a regular zero turn on the baseball fields.
Okay.
Yeah, you can certainly take a look at it.
Okay.
I would agree. I mean, I'm also thinking about, you know, the crape myrtles, palm trees, I'm talking about mulching, I'm talking about any other kind of landscaping. We have to pay for all that separate.
Right.
So if we have in-house, there's a lot of other things that we won't have to pay extra labor for, for that.
Can I say something?
I'd like to hear your opinion, Commissioner Diaz.
I mean, I guess my, it's not really an opinion, it would be a question for the City Manager. And first, just because it's going to be on the topic of financial documents, I wanted to thank the City Manager and the Finance Director for providing me some documents this week to be able to start, you know, from my original request that we had discussed. And having said that, in between my requests, I did receive a letter from the City Manager explaining how tight the ability is of the Finance Department to come up with, you know, financial analysis and other documents or what have you. And I'm, you know, my request was on relatively simple documents. So when we're talking about analysis, let's talk about what we're actually really requesting from the city. So my question would be, how long would it take, and do we have the staff and ability and wherewithal for the city to be able to put this together? Let's start with comparing the direct costs. You'd have to do a pretty serious cost-benefit analysis, looking at the contracting versus the outsourcing, historically what that was cost. But at the same time, you'd have to estimate the cost of the equipment, the personnel, the maintenance, the insurance, the operational expenses, including then all the benefits and what have you, and all of that largess. You're going to have to factor in hidden costs, like vendor profit margins, lack of direct control, potential price hikes. You're going to have to now in-house train, have a hiring process, you're going to have to depreciate these assets as well, not to mention maintaining the assets. So the first part of the analysis would have to be a long-term projection, five to 10 years out, where we would see the cost savings or the overruns that might occur. Now, considering we're talking about lawn equipment, we're talking about, you know, positions that have very high turnover in general in the industry, you're going to have to factor in those hidden costs as well, of what it would take to constantly have a pipeline of employees. Those costs alone, just from my review of our finances in the city and budgets and what have you, would already make this a interesting request to begin with. But then we're going to have to do a lifestyle cost analysis, and I would ask the Finance Director to do a lifestyle, a lifecycle cost analysis for the equipment. You know, we'd start with the purchasing costs, we'd have to estimate maintenance and repairs, we'd have to look at historically what this maintenance would be, we'd have to find other similar cities that would have that kind of equipment and that kind of infrastructure that we're asking to purchase, because there's going to be operational costs, you know, fuel, electricity, supplies, again, back to the staffing. One staff might be the one that rides the mower, another staff is going to be the one that's going to fix the mower. Then you're going to have to look at what potential rezone salvage value would be at the end of use, and what kind of return you'd have there in depreciation lifecycle, and then, of course, the useful lifespan. So, you know, sometimes you're going to have to look at owning versus contracting and the risk that you're taking for that equipment. So the equipment breaks, it's on you. The equipment breaks for the contractor, it's obviously on them, and they've figured that into their analysis. The total cost of ownership would probably be a separate report as well. What would be the total cost of this department in general, between salary, benefits, pension, long-term liabilities, training, compliance costs, administrative overhead to maintain, you know, this HR juggernaut that we're adding to the city? I'd probably ask also the city to perform a performance and efficiency consideration. So, for example, do we really legitimately have the expertise to do it better? And if so, why did we stop doing it at some point? Because the expertise would have come at a point, you know, for example, at one point we had a fire department, then we decided that we were going to outsource it to the county. So we made a decision at some point in different places of where that expertise and cost would come in. In other words, where would the dollar be better spent? I would think that there's service quality risks on both sides, whether it's in-house or not. In-house, you might have different rules within our own HR of how you can hire and fire versus, you know, canceling a contract and looking at the quality control there. I mean, would we really have greater flexibility or not? Those are hidden costs, you can't necessarily analyze what the flexibility and control of those employees would really mean. And again, I mean, I would want to see side by side, probably at least three to five cities, to be able to really come up with analysis that makes sense. Should we bring an entire department in-house or continue to, you know, an outsourced service? I think the, you know, Commissioner Resnick makes a great point, we should have an analysis. That would be what I would think the analysis would have to look like for us to be able to make an informed decision. And I mean, that's a lot of staff time, you know, so back to my question to the City Manager, do we have the ability to come up with such an analysis in such a short period of time to be able to make a decision for the next fiscal year?
Yeah, no. You just rattled off a million requirements to be able to evaluate this objectively, and, you know, we're jumping into budget season and everything else. So when you say in short order or short return, no. You know, there's a lot that needs to go into this to be able to make an educated decision. I just, you know, having looked at what makes sense from outsourcing, and why many of our sister municipalities and others have also done the same, is because of all those things that you mentioned, long-term, not to mention, you know, when you're dealing with landscape crews, much like public works crews, from a liability standpoint, which you haven't even brought up as part of your analysis, when it comes to workers' compensation claims, having experienced these myself, that's where most of those claims come from, is landscaping crews and seasonal employees, which, you know, coming from where I come in the Northeast, we don't have to worry about landscaping in February, but we have a big impact four months out of the year, and a lot of those are seasonal employees. That's where we see skyrocketing injuries, skyrocketing claims. When it's contracted out, you contract out your risk as well, which it can be a hard thing to put a number on, but all it takes is a couple of claims, and, you know, quickly those costs become, you know, even bigger.
I might add one other thing. Fair or not, I'm not saying this is a good thing, but when you're talking about this employment pool, or just say restaurants, independent restaurants and things like that, they don't get 401Ks, they don't get retirement plans, they don't get health insurance, they don't have the overhead that an organization the size of the city would have. And that's, I'm not saying that's a good thing, but that is a reality. So when you put all of those different things, they can run it, and that's all they do, is lawn and garden-type work, and that's their specialty, they're good at it, that's not what we do. So just something to keep in consideration. I apologize, Commissioner Bruce.
That's okay. Quick question, Commissioner Caruso. What other cities surrounding us do in-source their landscaping?
Well, I didn't ask that question. I only asked three cities.
Okay.
And I only asked the question if they outsource it, which they said they do.
Okay.
But they do use more than one company.
Got it.
I mean, I'm willing to go above and beyond and find a city or multiple cities that do it, and ask them if they can give me an analysis. Easy.
All right. So I think we're going to probably, I think, to sum it up, we're going to come back and revisit this. We've definitely bought ourselves a bunch of time we can come back and talk about. If there's an appetite to bring any services back in, we'll be talking about this type of philosophy over different departments, particularly as we start getting into budget season. Back to new business. If I can, can I lead off with something? Is that acceptable? Just talking about, let's see, next meeting is scheduled for March 10th.
Yes.
And just want to make sure that I, so we know Legislative Action Days are in Tallahassee. I believe the Deputy Mayor is going to be out of town anyway, not going to Legislative Action Days, right?
That's the 24th, yeah.
You're missing that Commissioner?
I'm missing the 24th.
Oh, you're missing the 24th, not the 10th?
Not the 10th.
Oh, okay, thanks. So then you just make note of that, so we know.
Legislative Action Days is the 24th.
Just want to make sure, because we have to have three commissioners present.
Legislative Action Days is the 24th, it's that same weekend, isn't it?
It is.
Oh, yes, you're right. Yeah, I'm confusing. Yeah, that's right. We were talking about, we got the dates mixed up.
Yeah.
That's right. So you're going to be out.
I'm going to be out.
On the 24th, that is, I apologize, I was thinking it was the next City Commission meeting. It's two meetings from now.
Correct.
So, and there was definitely talk about a couple of commissioners going. I guess, here is the question. Do we want to change the date of that meeting? So if you're going to go to Legislative Action Days, to go when it's halfway over, is kind of, you know, why go, I mean, if you're going to go, get the full effect, or are you willing to just go to half? You know, we know we're already down one, Deputy Mayor's not going to be here, and he's not going to Tallahassee.
No.
He has family commitments.
Family, yeah.
How, and I just want to throw the thought out there, do you want to change the date of that meeting so that you can get the full effect of Legislative Action Days? Or do you want to, are you just perfectly fine just going up the next day, missing a chunk of that?
I believe Monday is just check-in, and maybe a class that I'm not personally taking. So I could either go Monday and attend via telephone, or I could just drive up right afterward and check-in, if that's what the schedule, I believe that's what the schedule said.
Well, with, so the two things you respond to, that first, it's a four-hour drive, so if you're going to get out, depending on how late our meetings go, right?
That's very true.
And then you got a four-hour, and then, right? So if you drive up in the morning, that's going to make for, you might miss some stuff.
Yeah, I would miss some stuff.
At the same time, if one other commissioner wants to attempt to call in, then we don't have a quorum. And so that won't work, right? So I guess, again, we've changed meeting dates before.
I'm okay with changing a date.
I mean, if you want to do that.
Do it the 31st.
Why don't we just cancel it altogether?
Well, we could just cancel it.
Well, the only problem, I will tell you, because we floated it, and we've canceled meetings altogether before, but we do have to be careful though is that we don't miss any, like, there are sometimes critical deadlines pop up and all that things that were really, where we will hurt someone who will miss out on financial obligations.
There is the 31st.
Can we put the 31st?
There is the 31st, gives you another week.
And now, if we don't have anything, we can then cancel that one. We can tentatively move it for now. And if there's nothing really pressing, we can still cancel that one on the 31st.
Sure. Do you need a motion?
Well, I want to kind of, I'm looking to staff. I don't want to, you know, I'm really looking for input from you guys too. Before we make a decision, we don't want to throw something at you and then there'd be a big surprise.
Yeah, I guess the only thing on my radar is a couple of pending projects that have been long-term and anticipating, depending on where they're at with applications and P and Z, that might be the only sensitive, you know, looking out that far now. We do have a couple of things on the 10th, but nothing definitively slated that I see for the 24th. So, it may be one of those, like you said, we schedule it for the 31st and play it by year.
You know, that would still give us, and then actually it kind of works because then the next meeting following.
Is a while away.
Is still two weeks out.
Yeah.
So, we're not like, we're not really, you know, putting a meeting right in front of another meeting.
Yep.
Set that as tentative, or actually, let's set that now unless next meeting there's a big change. You want to reschedule the city commission meeting scheduled as of the 24th, move that to the 31st.
Sounds good to me.
Commissioner Diaz, I know you work and run a business, you're okay with that? Okay. I see a consensus. I'm seeing everyone shaking their, are you?
So, the 24th, the 31st is our new meeting.
The 31st would be the new meeting.
Perfect.
Thank you. There's a general consensus for the record and we'll, we'll do that. Okay? All right. Any other new business?
Commissioner Bruce.
I have a few things I wanted to bring up. The first one is, it's recently come to my attention that the secondary drinking water standards for the aeration for three different plants has not been budgeted yet. And I wanted to see if we could put that in the upcoming budget so that this could finally be taken care of. And when I say secondary, I mean taste, odor, smell for drinking water.
Yeah, Ms. Mayor, yeah. In reference to that, that would be the aerators that were intended to, they've been on our capital improvement plan, they were part of the FY '25 original as well, it had to be cut due to funding. We have submitted as part of our state appropriation requests to fund those three aerators. Short of that, you know, we would have to look at prioritizing that within the year. So, I would say, yes, it is a, it was an item that had to be removed because of the cost and other priorities, but it still is on our capital improvement plan and we still need to do it. So, it will be part of that entire budgeting process, so.
Yeah, so that will be coming up in the, in the spring. We start having budgeting meetings and setting priorities and what's going to, yeah, and that's an important one.
Total cost is about 1.5 million. It's about 500,000 per aerator. So, if we did all three, yeah, we're looking at about 1.5 million in total.
Okay.
Right. Improving taste and smell of water.
Yes. My goal is, like Rob Miller said, you know, we want to get back onto the number one cities of of Florida or the United States. I'm not sure how we do that, but I'd also like to be eligible for the best drinking water. Sarah was saying that her old town was, was recognized and although it's a different state, you know, I think that that would be a fabulous goal for us, for us. I got two more, two or three more things. Creek update. Mr. Trevino had had brought up what's going on with the creek update and I, and I believe that we have something pending, but can you just give us an update on what we, where we are in the creek update and what will happen in the near future?
Yes. So, applications have been submitted for the funding source, for the remaining NRCS funding to be able to get those. We're just waiting on final approvals and getting things going so that we can go out and once we have that funding, be able to go out, put out a bid to contract there, be able to do both the, the allocation would be the actual debris removal throughout all of the creeks and then the sediment removal at the creek crossings as part of that funding. So, we're getting closer and and working towards that.
Wonderful. Okay, and last item. I met with Dave Baer earlier this week, last week regarding the lights and that was wonderful. But one thing that he brought to my attention was that this property, it's called Jetta Point over on 417, right by the memory care facility across from the GID parcel, is currently owned by Seminole County. And they currently have been using the site for their debris for the hurricanes. And I guess it's now up for discussion that they might want to sell it. And they are actually talking with hotels to see if anybody would be interested. And so, I contacted Commissioner Delary because he had told me two years ago they were going to keep it. And so, I contacted him, I said, what's, what's the change of heart? And he just said, you know, we're, we're, we're looking into options, nothing, nothing has been decided, but we would like to do a economic feasibility study and we would like the city of Winter Springs to partner with us and do a $25,000 study, Winter Springs paying half and the Seminole County paying the other, to find out how this would all work. And then, then we can bring it to a hotelier to see if somebody would like to come into the town of Winter Springs in addition to, of course, rezoning.
Doesn't need to be rezoned.
Yeah. That's something I guess we could point that.
Yeah, that's, that analysis is not something that I, that I've heard. I've spoken with a couple of folks from the county as well. I do know, I think there is that interest and I believe they have been talking to at least one or two hotel developers and, you know, my conversation with them was, would the city support that initiative? And I said, yes, I think there would be support to do that. It's been talked about for many years that that location at 417 is a perfect location for a hotel. Although it is county-owned, it is within the city limits. Therefore, the tax revenue would be adding additional commercial valuation for us right now, county not paying tax and ultimately, so the benefit there is although it is owned by the county, it's not in, unincorporated, it is in the city limits and we'll be able to benefit, not only is it a great location, a faraway hotel for many reasons, but also be able to gain from the commercial tax revenue. So, that's the first I've heard about partnering on anything. That was never mentioned to me, but might be something we could look at.
Thank you.
Yeah. I got one thing. I don't want to speak too soon. We were talking about moving forward with workshops and potential dates and things like that. We wanted to get back to like some of the wastewater, potable water, stormwater issues. Would you, are you ready to talk about any dates yet or moving?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I actually sent an email out this evening to, to you folks asking, during our last meeting, we discussed bringing in our consultant team in March, you know, sometime around mid-March as a dedicated workshop meeting dedicated to wastewater and reclaim. We'll then have a, another dedicated meeting to wait, to stormwater and then another dedicated meeting to our potable water as we've talked about as a result of the, the planning process that, with the strategic plan meeting that we had. What's been shared because of the spring break week in, in March and a couple of other commitments with consultants that it will be out of the country, they have proposed a date of Thursday, March 13th in the morning from 9:30 to 12 is the current date if we were to look at trying to do it in March, dedicated again to the wastewater update for the wastewater treatment plant. You know, at that time, we would also be able to have our C Mar attend and and our whole, our team as well to be able to provide an update and have a discussion around where things are at related to wastewater and reclaim.
Great. So, the 13th is what we're talking about in the morning. Any objections to that? I know there was an email sent, I guess we don't really need to talk about that on the dais, but, and Holly, you may have noticed I pronounced dais correctly that time.
Oh, is that how you say it?
Right, exactly. I, I was corrected, yeah, yeah, I was corrected last week, yeah, and I've been saying it wrong for years, yeah. So, at any rate, like 13. You just simply respond, again, fully understand.
How are we responding?
Yeah, but, oh, great, yeah, I did not see it came in moments before the meeting started, so, okay.
I got a quick question though about the workshop. When, in the wastewater workshop, I mean, I have another follow-up question, but I guess, are we going to, is Veolia going to be present?
No.
Okay. Because my, my real question is why are they still employed? I mean, that's really what my real question is, but, I mean, are they even, why wouldn't they be here if we're going to have a full commission that we can ask Veolia direct pointed questions on behalf of our residents?
I, I would say, if I might, if I can, that, so there's a number of issues.
We're discussing wastewater and they're the reason why we're having this discussion.
Yeah, you asked a question, let me see, if I can float it and then maybe we'll look at Anthony, maybe for a little guidance. We were planning on, in my understanding, to have Corolo here. Was that correct? Okay. And then, so the problem we have to be very careful with in getting into some of these issues with Veolia is we do in fact have standing consent order, we have a warning letter that has not been addressed, the DEP is put on the back burner. Really important, this is wastewater, not drinking water, where we're having problems with, you know, right, coliform or total suspended solid, this is nothing to do with our drinking water, we're talking about wastewater issues. We are negotiating with Department of Environmental Protection, we're right in the middle of that. Part of that negotiation is also what Veolia will be responsible for financially if there, and there will be burdens, you know, financial burdens and penalties, and what are they responsible for as the attorneys are having those conversations if we start, and then on top of that, their contract will be coming up for bid and we will be in negotiations with and, and putting out RFPs and RFQs and things. Is that some, is that a, maybe I'll just look to Anthony, are we getting into dangerous water? If we start in with our contractors while we're in the middle of attorneys battling legal things from penalties from DEP to negotiations to another one that's coming down the pike, I don't know that that necessarily, I don't, it's dangerous.
I'm sorry, Mayor, but I'm, I'm not sure that was the initial commentary regarding the purpose of this meeting, maybe the manager couldn't.
Yeah, I think the understanding, the idea was is to bring up the commission and any interested residents into the details and answer questions. We wanted to go through each of the real big priorities. Wastewater was chosen as first, then we'll be getting into like potable water, then we'll get into stormwater. We're talking about having these workshops to really deep dive wastewater. How did we get here? Where are we? What are we doing moving forward? How are we paying for what we're doing? Why are we not going to Iron Bridge? Why are we doing what we're doing? What is the technology? Basically, deep dive. And I think the commissioner makes a valid point. I'm not saying that we don't, I just, I'm a little worried if we, if we're going to use it as a, I think it's an education for us, but we don't want to be putting on like a confrontational thing with people on the record in a public meeting. I think the attorneys have a lot of work to do while they're working through things. Does that make sense? No, we're, yeah.
I have to report after.
Mayor, I agree with your commentary on, you know, when you have the pending consent orders that are being worked on, but I thought the scope was going in a
Right.
Much broader direction on where we're heading with this new facility.
That was, that was the scope, was the timelines, the plans moving forward and what does it look like to build the plants versus Iron Bridge, just as you said, and what, but C Mar and Corolo, kind of that was, that was the scope of the path. The current vendor that's operating the facility is different than the path forward because there'll still be a vendor operating the facility once it's built.
And the commissioner is asking if that vendor, is it appropriate for that vendor to be here when we were going to have the engineer? Is that right? That's what your question is?
Yeah, I imagine so.
Do we realistically think that Veolia is even going to bid when we are?
Let's not get into these discussions.
Okay.
This is something that's open, that's like, I, we want everyone to bid.
I think they should run as fast as they can.
I, I didn't catch that, but, okay, so, the purpose of the meeting, right?
Sounds good.
The 13th.
See you then.
March 13th.
We okay with that?
March 13th.
Bye.
Sounds good.
Thanks. Okay. Other new business? None? Okay. We'll move on then to reports. Oh, Christian's not here, so I'll lead the charge. City manager, Mr. Sweet.
Yes, Ms. Mayor. Just a couple of updates. It's, it's been busy over the last couple of weeks. One thing that I think is kind of exciting, able to join on with our fellow Seminole County cities with joining into the Altamont Global Innovation Lab. It's still a lab that essentially serves as a hub for developing, piloting and deploying advanced government technologies, includes items not limited to, but similar to AI-powered tools, digital technologies, clean and green solutions, community health initiatives, mobility projects, safety projects, program for STEM education and workforce and staff training and development. As part of a innovation partner, the city of Winter Springs will be participating with our fellow Seminole County cities and in working with them on some of these sharing of best practices, participating in innovation forums and kind of fostering a continuous communication and collaboration around advanced and cutting-edge projects that we as a larger group opens us up to better procurement options and bigger discussion. So, happy to report that, that we are part of that and will be moving forward with contributing part of that. I know in the past has not always been the case, we have not been able to participate in some of the other initiatives that have been led for various reasons, but I think that things are changing on that front and they're happy to have us and we're happy to be part of it. So, I'm excited to see what potential opportunities might be able to come out of that to improve government, our, our city and in the region as a whole, efficiency and operations through some of this innovative technology and discussions. Since we're on the topic or we were on the topic of discussion, we will be releasing an RFQ for the operation and maintenance of our, of our plants. Within the next two weeks is kind of where we're at. Right now, we're in finalization of, of the draft of that RFQ. We'll be going to Anthony and the legal team to review and get that, get that out soon, hopefully within the next, no later than the next two weeks, as we have a timeline on when we need to receive questions, go through the process, ultimately get their, the current contract with the, our current vendor expires at the end of the fiscal year, September 30th. So, the line, the alignment of where things need to be for contract purposes, notice purposes, transition purposes have all been worked backwards from that point to make sure we, we're hitting that deadline. Cleat Sonia, our new utilities director, has had a, a lot of great insight and help into, you know, really, that's delayed us a little bit as we've looked at to make sure that this RFQ is drafted the way we want it and what serves, what's going to serve us the best. So, we're really putting a lot of extra effort and looking at making sure that that RFQ is going to be in good shape and we're going to get the best project as a result. One of the things I've mentioned in the past as we look at bringing back in-house with this RFQ, bringing in-house the management of the lift stations currently right now, that's through, outsourced through the vendor. So, this new RFQ, the, and I've been telling people the simplest way to think about the way this is structured is everything outside the fence and inside the fence. So, everything in, inside the fence will be essentially the plants and the plant operations will be done by a third-party contracted vendor. Everything that's outside of the fence, including lift stations, we would bring in-house and continue to manage and, and take part of that. So, I think that will be a big improvement as far as ensuring that it's a clean line of responsibilities and understanding and being able to, from a response standpoint and interaction with our residents and our customer base will all be in-house, city Winter Springs employees and staff. So, I think that's going to be a good change as it relates to that contract. Other than that, I don't have any, anything else to update.
Okay. Anthony?
No report.
Christian?
No report. You're doing a great job.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Caruso.
I had to be first.
It rotates each meeting.
Okay. Well, first of all, thank you, Mayor, for sending me to the Babe Ruth opening ceremony. I want to say Ava Blunney was amazing singing the National Anthem. She did great and I'm not a baseball player, I'm a hockey player, but I threw two strikes, so that was good. I was happy about that. And it was very cold, extremely cold. Right, Victoria?
Yeah. Terrible.
Terrible.
That is fun though, not a baseball, yeah, you know, yeah, you get those chances once or twice in life and they're great.
Yeah, it was good. So, most importantly here, I'm just going to read something. On October 1st, 2024, the Florida Department of Environmental Protection issued a consent order citing multiple violations and stipulating that our city has 739 days to construct a wastewater treatment facility. We submitted our response to this consent order on January 27, 2025, which also references a meeting held on December 4, 2024. It is imperative that our response is reviewed with the commission immediately. Why was this not done? I do have a copy of our response.
If I can, hold it, just look at, ask Anthony. We have legal, if I can't just.
It's public. It's public.
Okay, just one just asking our city attorney if we get into something where because it's nothing's been finalized and their attorneys and our attorneys are highly specialized folks and they're making these conversations, if this is public and someone's already put my understanding of this is draft, that it was not supposed to be public, but I clearly maybe I'm wrong on this one, but I just want to be careful that we don't say something that is going to we the attorneys are in the middle of negotiating settlements and talking about this. There have been major changes to these documents. I mean, it's been an ongoing thing. Do I have reason to be concerned or is this document? Has this document been released by the city or by DEP? Or any notes?
Well, we're being released by the city, but there I mean, there are drafts.
The drafts are public?
Going back and forth that are that are public, but they're like shifting sands. I mean, there's a lot of back and forth going on regarding, you know, the the alleged violations and and the responses.
Okay.
And the penalty amounts.
I apologize. After you, sir, I just wanted to make sure they were going somewhere careful.
I understand where you're coming from, Mayor. You know, I see the names that are on this and okay, let me finish. Furthermore, a warning letter was sent out on January 24, 2025, which appears to be a revision of the consent order from October. Can we confirm this? We were not notified of this warning letter until after I questioned it. While I do not intend to micromanage our wastewater treatment facilities, it is crucial that we maintain transparency and keep the commission fully informed about these developments. We need to ensure we are all in the loop moving forward.
Very fair.
Victoria?
Can you please provide clarification on who who is speaking and who is speaking to?
I'm speaking.
I know you are, but who who wrote this and who are they writing to?
Oh, I wrote this.
You wrote it?
Yeah.
Understood.
Well, I like to I don't normally write stuff down, but when it's something this important, I want to make sure I have it right.
Okay.
So I only have one copy of this. If anybody would like to see it, I can send it to you.
Okay. If I can't, let me let me back up and I am not making excuses. I want to I want to say very clearly, you're right. I agree with you. Wholeheartedly, I agree. So what has happened was, oh, boy, let me think about this. There was a surprise inspection of one of our plants back that would have been in September of 2023. It was a surprise inspection. Then the day I was walking in the morning, I was walking into J-Lab.
I do want to really get into all that detail, but can I can I see that? Because I don't have an issue with the commission getting the latest and greatest draft, but I'm not sure whether this is the most current version of where we're at because I haven't seen it.
Right.
I mean, it's just a work it's a work in progress with FDEP, as you know, Mayor.
Yeah.
We had a meeting with FDEP, a big meeting with all of their staff.
Hey, guys, gentlemen, gentlemen. Sorry, Mr. Miller, sorry. Could you repeat that?
No, we've had a meeting with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection. There were a lot of people in the room going over, you know, the draft consent order and going back and forth about a lot of little technical minutia, frankly, in some aspects of their allegations, but it's a work to work in progress. This appears to be our special counsel's, you know, detailed response to, you know, various draft statements by FDEP. And as you know, in these proceedings, you kind of go back and forth to clarify to try to clarify what exactly occurred and what the violation is. And then there's a there's a penalty, of course, that's associated with violations to that that FDEP statutorily imposes, but there's also a lot of back and forth regarding that because there's specific criteria that they have to comply with. And just because they say that it's one thing doesn't necessarily mean it is that. So there's a lot of back and forth going on regarding, you know, you know, firming up what actually occurred.
Okay. Maybe I'll keep it short. I'll put it to you this way. Look, there was another warning letter that came out just if I'm not mistaken, just just days before Christmas. And, you know, at that time, we did not have a utility director. Our city manager was not even a weekend. I was aware of it. We're so used to anytime something like that, it's out on social media that day, you know, it's really just because public these things happen to municipalities all over the United States every day. They happen in Seminole County all the time. So it I will make a commitment to you because I do think when I when I realized that the city commission was not aware of this and I was, that we should have told you and that we should have made it real clear. It's out on, you know, so often it's right out on social media and those things and it was Christmas and those things. I, you know, I do me a favor. I guess what I'm saying is we have a new utility director, new city manager. If you want to hang this on somebody, hang it on me. I've been here and I've been staying there.
We'll get the paperwork to us.
Okay, you have every right to that information. That's it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm finishing my report.
Thanks. Oh, sorry. I was doing it. Oh, no, you know what? I was going to ask you to go in my place because I know that you need to go.
So I do need to go, so I'm not going to give a report tonight. I've just got a family situation going on, so everybody, please bear with me. Everybody's okay, they're alive, doing their thing, but one decided to fall on her ankle. Mr. Bear, I won't forget you. I'll call you later, your team. So thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, that was my suggestion. I was going to trade places with you. Commissioner Diaz.
Thank you, everybody.
No report.
Commissioner Bruce.
Yes. So last Wednesday, I attended the Tuscula Beautification Committee and we got a fountain update and I just wanted to give those details to you all. So there's the North and the South Fountain and as you know, the South Fountain has been under repair for quite some time and now it's 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 active. And then the North Tower has been giving us issues because of a leak, so now we're repairing that, which our costs for the landscaping are now going to have to be redirected to the repair. And so they are the beautification committee is tasked to decide if they want to redirect the funds from the discourse entrance to the main entrance of about 35,000. And so there's some kind of debate on on how that will happen, if it will be split or if or if, you know, all the money goes over to the the main entrance. But from what I understand, it will be in operation within the next two to four weeks or so. In addition, Foxtail in the Winter Springs Town Center has opened today. I was so excited to be one of their first customers this morning and not only do they have coffee, but they have gelato. So that's fabulous. And this is right where the old ice cream parlor used to be. So fabulous and so excited to welcome them. In addition, on February 12th, the city manager and I attended a meeting with 10 or 12 residents in Tuscula Deer Run, also known as Willa Lake, to discuss the inflow and outflow structures of their stormwater pond. It is privately owned. However, there's a condition in the in the plat or the survey that shows that the city of Winter Springs is supposed to maintain it because of the the existing conditions of the roadway and and storm drainage. And so we are working with them. We have sent the engineer out to evaluate these control structures. The one thing that I found out today is there is PVC piping that looks horrible. They're going to remove that and put some mesh. So we're starting to make a little bit of progress and and those will be evaluated as as well as other ponds. In addition, like I said before, also met last Wednesday with David Bear and and some other parents regarding the Winter Springs Babe Ruth Lights and also the soccer teams, KKR, KR. Okay. And and of course, you know that story. And so we are, of course, looking into trying to figure out funds to be able to provide those services of of lighting the lower fields. And and then, of course, just a reminder that Wednesday is a big day. We've got coffee with a cop in the morning and then right here in City Hall, we have the phase three of the comp plan, which will be the third and final phase to discuss land use for the upcoming 2050 comp plan.
And Commissioner Baker.
It's been a busy couple of weeks since our last meeting, so I just want to share a couple of things that I've attended. I attended my first Citizens Advisory Committee at the Police Department on the 12th. They had a code enforcement meeting to explain what goes on with code enforcement, what the importance of code enforcement is, what the process and the legal timelines of code enforcement. It was very eye opening. They also wanted to pass along to the citizens that were there to pay attention to fraud right now, especially during tax season. They said file as early as you can because that is a huge risk for people going to file and it saying that that you've already filed. You don't want to deal with that, I guess. On the 14th, we had the state of the county lunch. One of the biggest takeaways and something I've personally been affected with in my family is that they've had a significant drop in opioid overdoses, poisoning and deaths in Seminole County. I thought that was huge. It was a wonderful event and we learned a lot about what's going on in the county. On the 18th, Taco Bell's on 434 had the ribbon cutting ceremony and several of us were there. So I just want to welcome them to Winter Springs. On the 19th, I also attended the Tuscula Lighting and Beautification and Victoria said pretty much everything. One thing I probably should have brought up during matters of the boards and committees is that that dollar amount that was just said about the plants for the pond or for that fountain, the south side fountain, I think it was quoted that those were for mature plants and I think everybody in Winter Springs kind of is at the same consensus that we need to budget our money pretty fairly to go to some really big projects. And as much as we all love instant gratification of mature plants, I think we should really request a secondary quote for just regular plants that can grow in a couple of years. On the 20th, we had the Tri-County League of Cities, which we hosted here in Winter Springs and the mayor did a great job with setting that up and getting sponsors. And this time's topic was legislative information, what's going on in the state. We learned a lot more than what I shared at the last meeting regarding property taxes and what some outcomes could be. And they also invited us to attend more sessions than just the legislative session that we're a couple of us are going to. And the Florida League of Cities offered to pay for the travel and hotel so that wouldn't be a burden and we could meet with legislators and really advocate for our city. And on the 21st, just this past Friday, the Police Department had an award ceremony and I just want to congratulate all the recipients and you guys do an amazing job for our city and we're really proud of you. That's it.
Thanks. Okay, so trying not to skip. Let's see. It has been right Sado County Tri-County League. I was happy to say I am now a board member of the Tri-County League of Cities. Right? We did the Taco Bell opening and just for those that do the other Taco Bell on Tuscula is actually and they once they opened this one, they knocked that one down. You may have all noticed, but it's well on its way. Eliano's Coffee, we had Foxtail, right? Now Eliano's is doing their ribbon cutting on the 6th, right? So hopefully you can all make it. And further information can be found through the chamber on that one. For the specific time, I apologize, I didn't write down. I attended the Board of Trustees. Boy, that's a very, very bright group of people. And, you know, Commissioner Diaz, I think you might find yourself right at home with that group of incredibly intelligent financial wizards and former operating officers of banks and really well-informed people. Police Awards was really great. There are lots of good things. Movie on the Park is on the 6th in Torcasso Park. So if you have kids and families and you want to see Despicable Me, I know the police chief isn't here, but usually they used to bring popcorn and and some bottled water, but bring a blanket and some chairs and go catch a movie with your kids at Torcasso Park on the 6th. And then the comprehensive plan meeting, the final comprehensive plan meeting is scheduled for the day after tomorrow. In this room, this is your last chance to be heard, not because it was public input, but this is a real formal study. We need residents to respond and and let us know what you want Winter Springs to look like in 2050. Out in the lobby, there are more of these cards out there. Please, I'm begging you, we need you to be heard. Do you want, you know, more parks? Do you want lights? Do you want you want high-density apartments? Do you want more retail? Do you want more restaurants? This is the time to be heard. And with that, I am done. And that brings us to final public input. And so we don't have any pre-blue form. Anybody who wants to step forward?
Leah Weissman, 113 Brookshire Court. Just a comment, I don't remember if I mentioned this before or not because I tend to repeat myself anyway, but Mayor, you're doing a great job talking to the veterans, but they have organizations. So if you guys back off, they will they are they're very well organized. But some of the committees have not been anyone leading saying, what do you want as part of your, you know, your goals? Was your input? Nothing. And the Parks and Rec had to not meet, I think, because two people were let go because they'd missed I don't know how many meetings, I don't know. And besides that, that then someone resigned. So we didn't have a meeting the last time. We weren't allowed to because of that. So I'm just saying is is that shouldn't other boards be allowed to give their input as well as what they want to be in their objectives? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like Kevin? Yeah, sure. And name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Kevin Hockenberry, pastor at Authentic Church. We meet at Winter Springs High School, 158 Tuscula Road, Suite 1312, Authentic Church Headquarters. Looking forward to the Foxtail, by the way. Can I have enough coffee? I did not come here to talk about what I'm about to talk about. Came here to throw my support behind the lights issue, but the young lady that was here earlier talking about the speed issue that she's seen in other areas. For those of you not familiar, our church headquarters is on Tuscula Road, right next to the chiropractor, water to a T, that little area there. So our window, we can see the four-way stop there. When I tell you cars go through that stop sign at 40 miles an hour, it happens regularly. I would say total guess, maybe one in 10 cars make a full stop there. My wife witnessed something. She's got it on video of a truck hitting a guy on a skateboard the other day. They stopped, they almost got into a big fight over there, pretty intense moment. My wife has hit been hit by a car. My teenage daughter was almost sideswiped the other day. It is out of hand. I know you're a Philly guy. It's it's almost like people are doing Kensington stops there. You know what I mean? And so I know I could probably take this to the Police Department and ask for more patrol there. Maybe that's what I'll do. But at the same time, this it's really bad. You have that big marquee sign there, the the public sign that's kind of the clock tower and all that. It produces kind of a blind spot and I got this new building that's over there as well. And I'm telling you, it is it is nonstop and it's only a matter of time, I believe, that we're going to have a real issue there. So I don't know what the answer is. I'm not a big speed bump guy, but maybe something needs to be done there to slow people down. It is dangerous. I do not park my truck there anymore. I park my truck in the back. I tell my kids all the time, my wife, we're parking in the back. We I just feel like I greatly increase my odds of not being hit by a car parking in the back. So that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it. Valuable. That's a yep. We've all seen it, I think. Thanks for making the point.
Gina Schaefer, the Winter Springs Village. I saw that the county was giving the incubator money and I think the incubator should recruit other cities for money, not just the city of Winter Springs and the county. I know that we will be working on a new budget, so I'm just putting that out there, but I know that that will be coming up and we do we are the only city that contributes money to the incubator. I asked also for the city to last meeting to sponsor a mother and son or a mother and child field day, or I actually came up with for a boy, a mother and son square dance because I thought if it swing your partner round and round, dosey doh, whatever, boys would be involved with that because if any of you ever went to middle school and learned that, that's something. that, that's something they'll do. So anyway, I'm still going to keep saying it every time I get a chance. Also, having a QR code on the signs in the parks would give us the history of why the parks are named that, and I'm going to say that every time I get it, because three minutes, believe it or not, I got the streetlight on Michael Blake and the reduction out on the 434 speed, and went to the state, asked them what to do, told me to keep coming to you all, so that's what I did. So that's why I'm going to keep, keep it up. I also am asking the commission, if you have cell phones, that you not have them on the dais, that you have Christian hold them during the meetings, because people that I know have said that they've seen people looking at their phones, and I'm not making any, but I'm just giving that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Gallo?
Evening, Art Gallo, 199 Nandina, Nandina Terrace, Winter Springs. Jet a point, that, for those of you that, there's a little history there, I live in the HOA Howell Creek Reserve, and we are two communities there, Howell Creek Reserve Side and Eagles Watch Side. Some of you may remember long ago that the county owned that and was going to put a county park there. Big softball, lit softball field, plus other fields, soccer, lacrosse, those kinds of things, and this really impacted my neighborhood, especially the Eagles Watch Side. The folks there back up to that area, and they were very concerned with the lights from the field, the noise from the games that would be at night, whatever, the county listened and, I guess, went somewhere else. So if there's a move to do something with that property, I'd like to invite the mayor, the commission, anybody like to come to speak to our board, to tell us what you're thinking to put there, to make whatever you decide to do maybe easier to get done, at least for our community to have an input. That would be my request, and that's the Howell Creek Reserve Community Association. Lastly, I was quite frankly disappointed to hear the discussion about this DEP violation back in October. I was hoping we were beyond all this and that, now we're going to listen to all the social media input and all that garbage. This is stuff that, you know, bad news doesn't get better with age, it's not like wine. So things like this need to be brought forward. I understand the process a little bit, that this is a negotiation, and, and any money that's collected eventually goes to making the problem go away, you know, you put that money towards fixing whatever the problem is. So my disappointment is that it shouldn't be a surprise, especially to the dais, because we're just going to get people riled up again, we get all this false garbage through the social media, you all know that. So, understand was a mistake, appreciate that, but we just need to move forward and get, whatever it is, get it taken care of. Thank you for your service to our community, we need to keep, keep smiling and keep pushing forward. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else?
30 seconds, Robert Milner of 679 Silver Creek. I stood here a few minutes ago and made a comment to the dais, that you need to work with the city manager, with the city's attorney, and you need to get all this stuff that we need to go forward. You're the people on the dais right now, if you want to be hounded by people out here who are taking pictures of all of our meetings, and they put someone on social media that, you know, on a certain, certain day, this man said, I don't agree we should have tax increases, and everyone in the city says, I'm not going to vote for one of you because you, you support tax increase. I'm being very kind with that particular piece of criticism, by the way, because that's not the issue that I really, anyway, I ask all of you, start working together. I don't, this thing about the water and the sewer and all this stuff goes back in ancient history, and I can, there's a lot of, a lot of people are guilty of some serious crimes in this city that are maybe not sitting up here, but they're in the background here that have spread a lot of rumors, I mean, you know, I've seen photographs of the prior, the earlier city manager sitting on a stolen city lawnmower that was not stolen, and they put faces of two commissioners here on, next to him, and they said, these guys don't have any problem with the city manager stealing city equipment. This goes on, you know, in the background, you're going to, all of you are going to be hounded by this now, unless we start working together, and let's, let's leave all this stuff in the background, move forward. That issue that was raised, you know, about DEP, when I was sitting on this commission, every once in a while, we had meetings behind closed doors. It was announced, it was going to be a closed meeting, the city was being sued, or maybe it was going to be sued, and, you know, we all took an oath, we're not going to discuss what happened in that meeting until this issue is resolved. That way, we don't have to worry about people bringing up their personal opinion about, he's responsible for this, and that man should go to jail, and those type of things. We need to move forward. Now is the time, you're in the hot seat, don't, don't blow this opportunity again, please. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I would like to say one last thing about the wastewater treatment plants. In December of 2023, before members of the Florida Senate and the House of Representatives, I very clearly said, these spills will continue until these plants are replaced. We are spilling a very small percentage compared to some of our neighboring plants, but let me be clear, these spills will continue until these plants are replaced. They should have been replaced a decade ago, I'm not pointing fingers. It's going to happen again, folks, it's awful. We have a responsibility, we need to keep moving forward on these plants. Thanks. I'm sorry, I thought we were over with the-
You covered what I wanted to cover.
Okay, thanks, then. We are adjourned. Thank you, folks, for being here. Thank you. 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 Thank you.